There you go.
Welcome, everybody, to the town panel select board meeting special. July 7th at 6:30 PM. We need to approve the agenda, staff meeting, public comment, executive session, personnel and adjournment. So can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jamie?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Angie, I?
There's nobody else with us?
There's nobody else with us.
Just those three.
Just us three. Yep.
I didn't know this new system we could see.
I think you can.
Okay.
I think Darcy's there.
Okay.
Okay.
Just curious.
I'm not sure. This is the first time using the new Zoom.
Yep.
Big TV.
Yeah, how's it look?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hi, Darcy. Yes.
Hello there.
I was just wondering if we had an audience, that's all.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm watching.
Okay.
Well, she tells us she's talking from that corner.
And you're watching so you can see us and everything's good?
Yes, it looks fantastic.
Excellent. All right. So. Number two, staff meeting, and Ellen is here with us. Welcome, Ellen.
So our, well, it's just our staff meeting is going to be Ellen. And each one scheduled for 15 minutes.
Yep.
Then followed by Darcy, followed by Julie, then followed by the listers.
Yep. Okay. Welcome, Ellen. First of all, I want to say thank you for all the hard work that you've done this year. We appreciate it. We know that it's been a difficult year, especially in the office with COVID. And we appreciate everybody that was here and followed all the rules and directions, and we thank you. All right, so we had a meeting last year like this, and we just want to keep in touch with everybody and make sure everything is going along. So I have 10 questions, and you can answer, go off on your own, whatever. I just wanted to have like a do you enjoy your position?
Yes.
Do you feel connected to our team, meaning the office and the board?
Yes.
Is there any equipment or resources that you need to help in your position?
Not at this time.
Do you think in the future?
Don't know yet. As it comes up, I'll let you know.
Okay. So you're, you're dealing with a new Nemrick and your
Cash receipt.
Cash receipts and you're enjoying it? Kind of? How's that going?
Pretty good. Pretty good. I think it's going okay. We seem to have a routine down. Tim and I work close together with all that, so.
I'm sure.
We're connected and it's going well.
I'm sure it's different, and there's, I'm sure there's a learning curve with it.
There's a learning curve. There's some extra steps that a lot of extras. But it's okay. It is working, I think, I think, and then I put it, I pack it all together, and I think maybe we'll know more once we get, go through another audit, because as they audit it, I'll know if it's easier to just have that or.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and do you feel that as you're learning the system and learning curve that it's going to get easier and?
Oh, I think so. Yeah, I mean, it's not a hard, it's not a hard program to learn. I don't feel.
Okay.
Um. I we have glitches here and there sometimes with Nemrick, but I think, well, it's going okay. I think we're doing fine.
Good.
So do you, while we're on that?
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions. Um. Do we have access? Easy access to more training if you need it?
Yes.
Okay. Because I just want you to make, I just want to make sure from my standpoint.
Cynthia's on speed dial. If we ever have a glitch, we just call Nemrick and someone gets back to us if Cynthia's not available, so it seems to.
Okay.
Be.
I thought, I thought we had it set up that way on, but from my standpoint, I wanted to make sure that you have that.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Okay, Jamie, do you have anything else on that?
Just judging from our past audits and findings, do you think this is going to help?
We'll know when we get audited.
Yeah, because she hasn't had an audit yet.
Yeah, but I don't know.
Well, you knew the shortcomings, that's why I knowing the shortcomings and knowing what you're seeing in Nemrick, I didn't know if you had an opinion there.
I have no opinion.
We're fairly new, too new to form that, right?
Right. I would imagine.
Opinion.
That's fair. I just.
Okay. How do you feel the culture is in the office? Has it improved over last year?
Yes. Tremendously.
Okay. How do you feel about the communication in the office? Has that also improved and with the board?
Yes, tremendously.
Okay. Is there any suggestions that you have for us?
For the board?
Okay.
No, I don't think so. None at this time.
Okay. So my next question is, do you have any problems or concerns in the office regarding any teammate or the board?
No. I think everybody in the office is working hard to work together. I think the listers excelled extremely over the past year. They're on schedule with everything. I think everybody's doing great. Tim's been a great asset. Tremendous asset. And we all seem to, if we have an issue, we kind of all just talk, figure it out. Tim comes to me, I go to Tim, we go to Julie. Listers. I mean, it seems to be going well.
Good. That's what I'd like to hear.
Yeah. It's very comfortable.
Good.
More cohesive.
That's what my next question was. Are you satisfied with the level of comfort in your work area?
I am.
I mean, hopefully, when we have a new town office, it will be a lot better, but it would be an improvement.
Right. It would be easier not to always hear everything going on around you at all times, of course.
I think that's with anybody.
But I think, I think we all kind of do our thing and help each other out, so that's okay. I'm sure even with our own offices, we will continue to do so.
Right. You guys have anything?
My, my observations coming in here multiple times a week, for the most part. I, I think Ellen's exactly on the right page. I, I think there's I think everything is. Um.
It's definitely relaxed.
You're right. There's, there's a, but, but it's not to the point.
Of work's not getting.
That's right. It's not, it's not really a relaxed thing to where work isn't getting done. It's just everybody does pitch in, everybody helps out with whatever's going on. Everybody works very well together from and, you know, you just pop in the door as a select board member or zoning machine, whatever I pop in as, it's there's things that are just going on and, and the work doesn't stop. You know, we'll talk, we'll say, hey, hello, whatever, and then it's back to work. It's, it's just, it's, to me, I don't know if we had this meeting a year ago or whatever it was, you know, let's say a year ago, the culture is completely different.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Completely different. So that's just my observations, and I'm in here multiple times.
And it's, I, I do think it's way more efficient. I, I think that, I think the next audit should go well. Tim has the AP and payroll pretty organized. We can put our hands on what we need when we need it. Julie's switch over has gone well, I think, so far. She's really has caught on for not having to do like a cash receipt, you know, any kind of that.
Right.
I think that's helping her tremendously. And if she has a question, she's not afraid to ask, and Megan comes in, does her thing and you know, answers questions if we need it, so listeners do their thing. I mean, everybody just kind of does their thing and that's great.
Yeah.
And I think it's going well. I never get to see Darcy or that crew very much anymore we don't pass. I miss seeing them. I see them once in a while on Wednesdays, but
Right.
But everything seems, I feel is going okay. I hope everybody else feels that way. So.
Well, no, I do. I, I'm
I'm.
Like I said, I'm extremely satisfied when I come in.
Satisfied.
At any time. It's and I think, I think the efficiency to me, Ellen from before now, I think that's, that's such a different, it's at such a different level.
Absolutely.
Then, you know, it's at such a different level that it's almost to the point where I didn't know if we could extreme or get to that level.
I think we're getting there.
Yeah, no, I think, no, I think there's always room for improvement, no matter what, let's face it.
Absolutely. Every job has a.
On the flip side of it, you know, we're at a level of efficiency now. I, I feel because I don't feel when we come to a board meeting, I haven't felt this way for a while. When we come to a board meeting, I don't think we've lacked any information that we need to make decisions no matter what they are.
Right.
And if we do lack some information at a board meeting.
Rectify it and fix it.
Well, it's been, it's usually handed to us during the meeting while we're talking about whatever.
Right.
We're talking about.
Right.
It's usually, it's usually brought to us. And if not, it's usually, it's definitely there for the next meeting. So that's, that's huge for us as a board. I don't want to speak for everybody because I'm just one member. But for me, it's, it's huge to have that. To be able to have something in front of you to make the decision that you have to make. Yeah, that's what, that's what we need.
Well, that and getting the packets early and everything else. I mean, and I've noticed that in my opinion, there's a lot less tension in the office. And when you reduce the tension, you reduce some stress levels so you can focus on your work.
So you can.
People are more productive.
If you're all stressed out.
Yep.
You make mistakes you normally wouldn't make. I mean, everybody makes mistakes, but when you are on the edge of your seat 24/7 wondering what's coming next or, or whatever.
Yeah.
Or you just don't feel okay, then you definitely have a problem. But I think, I think that's pretty much on in the office. I think we.
That's great news. That's great news. Bob, you've joined us. Can you hear us?
I can, and sorry I'm late.
That's okay.
Does Bob have any?
Bob, do you have any questions for Ellen?
I know, I think it sounds like, it sounds like things are going a lot better and, and of course, those are the reports we're getting. I know I don't spend a lot of time in the office just due to my day job. I can't get out there very, very quickly or very much. But, you know, the package being early, that's kind of cool, except, except you have to go way back in your email to find.
And not minutes. Literally.
Okay. Do you feel that the town protects their employees from discrimination?
Better now, yes.
Do you think we still need to improve on that?
Yes, I do.
Is there any suggestion?
People hate policies, but you have been working policies, and I just think if you continue doing that.
Yep.
That helps us a lot. As an elected official, we don't have a lot of protection.
Right.
So the more policies that involve elected officials, I think your hired help, the employees themselves. I consider us all employees.
Right.
We're all paid by the same people.
Yep.
But I feel definitely that the employees themselves, the hired employees are definitely protected pretty well. The policies seem to cover stuff. I mean, I'm sure there's little nooks and crannies that, again, can be improved. I don't have any opinion on that, but as elected officials, the more that we have to protect us.
Okay.
Is, is great, and you guys have worked on that, and I appreciate that.
All right.
And that's something that we definitely can continue to work on, and I think that's part of our goal. We've talked about that with Tim and Megan is, is to definitely work on that.
Yep.
Part of it. You know, it's, it's a work in progress, and we're going to continue to work on that.
Yep. Great.
What practices do you think we need to change in the office if there's any?
Example of, I don't, I don't know what you're looking.
Any kind of
Stuff that we do.
Practices or procedures or something.
Yeah.
Um. Think need to address.
Something that would stand out in my head at this moment.
Nothing?
No, nothing at this moment in the office. Like I said, right now, it seems to be going okay. I mean, I I kind of go to my, I go behind the TV and just kind of stay there until I need to bother Tim or somebody.
I know, and sometimes I don't even see you back there, and I'm not being rude. I'm not being rude. You should holler at me when I come in.
I do like that.
Because you get more work done.
I get, yeah, because people don't know I'm here.
You should holler at me when I come in. I don't mean to be rude, but it's like, I don't even know.
I've walked out.
Did, I did scare Jody today because I had to step out and do, and hand out the veggie van today, and I came back and she forgot that I was stuck back in the corner, and she almost fell over because I was behind the TV and I was talking. I was quiet, you know?
Yep.
So, yeah.
Okay, great.
No, I, I think the, I think things are good.
All right.
On my end anyway.
Good. The last question is, how do you feel the board is doing, and do you have any concerns or suggestions for us?
I think you guys are working well as a team. I don't have a problem. I do feel that if I really had a problem, I could request to come and see you.
Absolutely.
There wouldn't be a problem.
No.
Which is nice. I, I think you're doing your job. So if you can continue to move forward, that would be fabulous. Let's not go backwards.
No, no, no.
Go forward. Just keep going forward. That's all I ask you guys.
Sometimes we're going to go sideways a little bit, but that's okay too.
Listen, I'm going to say it, and I've said it to every single board I've ever sat in front of. Seriously, if there is a problem with one of my positions or something, please, instead of outside amongst each whatever, call me in. I'll come in. I don't need an executive session. I'm I'll talk, whatever you guys have going on. I mean, unless you guys prefer, but I'd rather know it than hear it through the grapevine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we want you to know that you can come to us anytime.
Absolutely.
Any problem or any questions. Yep. Does anybody have anything to add to Ellen? Bob?
I know I'm all set. Other than I appreciate you, Ellen.
Thanks, Bob. Jamie?
In your positions that you hold, is there anything going on that might need to be brought to the select board's attention?
Not at this time. Still, the only thing I'm doing right now is sitting back, waiting for the tax sales to get moving, but I can't make that happen, and there's nothing the board can do on that. Kevin's been busy.
You're waiting on the lawyer, correct?
Yep, and as soon as he can do that, that will move forward. But besides that, my, I'm, no issues with my jobs at this time.
Mike, anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable. I'm happy with um everything that's going on. I think, I think we asked Ellen to do some things this year that were with the, with the cash receipts and some other things that we asked you to do, and you took it with open arms, and I appreciate that. I, you know, I think from our standpoint, we're just trying to um and maybe it's not right, but we're trying to make things better than they have been in the past and more efficient and whatever, you know? Um, and maybe it didn't need to be done, but from our point, it did. I think you accepted those with open arms and have moved forward with them. You know, the other part of your job, we, I don't think we ever had a problem with it anyways. Okay. Let's, let's face it, right? You know me, I'm coming from, I'm not going to shoot from the hip. It's, it's honesty's out there. You know, and I think, I think it was a big change to ask you to do, and I think it was, it was from my opinion, it was great to see you just say, okay, that's fine, let's just do it.
That's what.
And I appreciate that, you know? I, I personally appreciate that part of it. Other than that, I have never had a question till and I didn't have a question with the other staff. It's just.
You have to do it.
It's new. It's just new. I get it.
We're good.
Yeah.
We're good.
Thank you so much for coming in, and if you could possibly call me tomorrow afternoon, I need to talk to you real quick.
Okay, okay.
I want to invite you to something.
Okay.
Okay. And since I can't find your cell number, I know you have mine. I think I do in there. I'm pretty sure you do. I don't have your number.
Oh, I'll, I'll.
I'll give you this number. This one I know. I can't remember.
Okay.
Hey, just call me when you get to my.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ellen.
Have a good night. So next up is Darcy, and she's in here, correct?
I am here.
Well, I had different questions for you that you missed last time. I'm sorry about the miscommunication.
Yes, I'm sorry. I would never not attend a meeting. I just, I don't know how that happened, but I'm here tonight, so.
Welcome.
Blame your husband.
Of course. It was Shannon's fault.
That's right. He's got big shoulders. So I have 10 questions for you as well, and you can add as you'd like. These are the same questions that I asked Joel and Tom. Do you enjoy your position?
Yes.
Do you feel connected to your team?
Absolutely.
Do you think your team feels valued?
Absolutely.
Great. Is there any equipment or tools to make your team's job better to implement?
We are well-tooled. Um, we, we have what we need at the time, yes.
Are there any areas that you would like to see improved at the waste treatment facility?
I feel like we are a well-oiled machine. I mean, we barely even have to talk to each other to know what we expect in any given moment, any given situation.
Do you have any problems or concerns with a teammate that you need to discuss with us?
Absolutely not. No, absolutely not.
Okay. How do you feel the culture is in the office?
I, I think I would just reiterate what Ellen had said, that it's a very good team. It's comfortable. The board is on task. Things are moving forward and getting done. Everything is well organized. I I, once again, it's just reiterating what Ellen said.
Okay, great. How do you feel about the communication in the office with you and the board?
Very comfortable. Very comfortable. I'm able to speak my concerns if I have them. Re- receptive to ideas. Willing to work together. I, I think it's been great so far.
I, I would, I've talked to Darcy just, just so I can speak in on that a little bit. I've talked with Darcy not a lot, but I don't know, three or four times or whatever over the last few months on some zoning permits and some different things, and the line of communication between Darcy and I has been perfect. I mean, it's just no, no problems whatsoever. We may play a little bit of phone tag back and forth, but that's expected, and, and I don't, you know, I don't expect her to sit on her phone, and I'm pretty sure she doesn't expect me to sit on mine, but things, you know, the questions that we've come up with or the situations have been really um handled pretty rapidly as far as I'm concerned, and, you know, from, from my standpoint, anyway.
Yes, absolutely, and I agree. And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm happy that you call if.
Yeah, no, I mean. Yeah, we need to talk about things and get things taken care of.
Absolutely.
Yeah, for sure, and, you know, I think that, that minded communication from, from my standpoint has been, been flawless. Um, and, and timely. I think that's important, both, both, you know, both ways.
Yeah, I think this board is very well organized. I, it's obvious you, you communicate with each other very well. That comes across.
Well, that's good, because that was the next question I was going to ask you. How do you think the board is doing, but you just answered that.
Here we go.
And my last question is, do you have any suggestions or concerns for the board to deal with?
I don't have any questions. I don't necessarily have any concerns. I, I do have a well, I'm following up on the drainage in the parks.
Yep.
That would be one thing. Good news, Alta did clear theirs, and I'm waiting, I, I have to resubmit a letter to Green Mountain. I will keep you informed. Good news is that the state and federal governments have reduced, have released some funding where we may be able to upgrade that pump station.
Yeah, I saw your email.
Yes, I, I did put you in on the loop on that. So hopefully, that goes well. I'm going to go after that money, and the engineers are on board. They're getting down to the specifics and told me to keep posted on my end, so we'll see if we can get that in the works. That would be fantastic.
It would be fantastic, especially to help fix that situation down there.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
You're absolutely right. I don't think there's really a fix for that the way it is right now. I think it will just continually to get worse.
Exactly, and it was never intended to be in that location. That was a last sort of minute decision to put it there, and that's what we ended up with. So another positive point of, of, if we go through this process, is you will have the operators that have been involved for 15 years having a say in the design, in the functionality, in the choice of pumps and mechanisms and control panels, and I, I think that'll be a real benefit to the whole process. So I'm excited. Can you tell?
Yes, I can. Well, anyone, do you have any other questions for Darcy? Bob?
Yeah, so, Darcy, if you need, yeah, I, I'm assuming that you're, you're writing out the grant applications and all that stuff. Of course, we've got some staff that can actually help with that if you need it.
Right, I have the email out to the engineer with what I would like to see done. I think that they and, and me and myself are just waiting for the specific language. What is it that we need to include to make this happen? So it, it, this just happened a few days ago. I mean, it's like, here's the money, put some stuff together, let's see what we can do, but I will definitely keep Angie in the loop. And the board needs, if I need anything from the board's signatures, I will let you know right away, and we'll get together and we'll make this happen.
That sounds great. Thank you, Darcy.
Jamie, do you have anything for Darcy?
Things are going good.
Yep. Mike?
No, I, I don't. I'm extremely pleased with the wastewater and, and communication and, and that kind of stuff. Um, I don't have any I don't have anything at all, except for I really want to get down there now that maybe we can find time.
Yes, me as well.
Maybe in August. July is going to kill me, but.
July is tough. August, me, September would be beautiful.
Okay.
Right? The weather's beautiful. The leaves are starting to change. It's, you know, the views, believe it or not, there's some beautiful views at the wastewater treatment facility.
I'm sure, I'm sure. So, you know, I, I, not that I've forgotten, Darcy, I certainly haven't, I don't think any of us have, so.
No, of course you haven't.
Yeah, just a matter of finding time to get down there, so.
I think that you have, you have excelled between the board's actions and the changes in the offices. Everyone's very happy. So I, I think that you've had a packed year. So I understand. In a nutshell.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Darcy, and thank you for a wonderful year and going through all the COVID, and please thank your team. We understand that it was a difficult year, and we appreciate everything that you guys did for us. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Have, have a nice evening.
Thanks, Darcy.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Bye. Julie, are you there, ma'am?
Yes, I'm here.
There she is.
Hi, Julie.
Hello.
Welcome. First, I'd like to say thank you for the year that you've put in. We know that it was very hard due to COVID, and we appreciate everything that you went through and dealt with and helped to keep the office going. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right, I have 10 questions to ask you. I'm sure, were you listening to the other?
No.
Oh, okay. It'll be a surprise to you then. So the first question is, do you enjoy your position?
Yes.
Do you feel connected to our team, meaning the office and the board?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any equipment or resources that you need to help in your position?
Uh, not at this, not at this time.
Okay. And how are you doing with Nemrick? Okay. And how are you doing with Nemrick? And the cash?
I don't like, I don't, mine was yesterday and then today I hit a snag, but, um, I have to wait, I had to wait so I can call Ellen or after, so I can ask her how to get out of it because I entered like my marriage license today.
Yeah.
That I had done. And it, my screen kept like blank and then I retyped it in, did it again. And I was like, so I did it for the third time. So then when I went through, now I have all three of them and I tried to reverse it and it won't let me go into reverse. So I'm like, so other than that, I only had one day so far.
Okay. I love your sound effects, Julie.
No, you're, yeah, it's like, no, really, you gotta.
And I'm sure there's hand signals that go with the sound effects knowing Julie.
Oh, yeah. They're nice hand gestures, though.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
They are for now.
You can come and sit. You're fine. All right. So how do you feel the culture is in the office? Do you think it's improved over last year?
Yeah, we actually get to see people.
And?
I don't. I actually, I don't have a problem with anybody per se. I mean, I think we all work good together. And if we have, if I have any questions or anything, I go, I'm straightforward. I just like, I go right to the person and we're good. I see Mike, you're all smug in face.
That's, that's an understatement with you, Jules, that's all.
No, I do. I'm just, I, I mean, I know.
No, no, no.
No, that's right. You know, I, sometimes I have to go out back and like get a spanking so I can help keep me, you know, quiet. So I, you know, can maintain to be professional up front, but.
Okay. How do you feel the communication is in the office? Has that improved over the, the year with, um, the board and your other members in the office?
I've never had a problem with communicating.
Sure.
Okay, great. Do you have any problems or concerns in the office regarding the treatment? That you're of a teammate or with the board? Excuse me.
Nope.
No? Are you satisfied with the level of comfort in the office?
We're laid back. Seriously, no, we're ungood.
You're good?
Yes.
You need massage chairs?
That's what I was afraid you were going to say, Julie, is you needed new massage chairs or something. I was a little nervous.
Hey, I have my own special chair. How do you know I don't have a massage chair?
I don't, so let that go.
Do you feel that the town protects its employees from discrimination?
Um, main, mostly, yes, but sometimes I, it's gotten better.
So where could you see us to improve on? What would be a suggestion?
I don't per se that you discriminate. But, and like I said, it's gotten better. But like, if you need to like talk to somebody per se, I, you know, like, don't just do it in front of everybody. You know? But I mean, it's gotten a lot better. I mean, like, we know how all of us are with our tones and, and we've gotten better. We've gotten really a lot, much better. And sometimes we need to be spoken to, but like, I'd rather be like, you know, like pull me aside or like, hey, can I talk to you later? And.
Keep it professional.
Yeah. I mean, cause I mean, I haven't had, I have, me, I'm just bold. I just come out with it. But I mean, overall, I just, I haven't been spoken to like that in a long time, so.
Okay, good.
Have a diminished filter.
What practices do you think we need to change in the office, if any?
None right now, like, none. We're, I think we're all working together and if we need something, we can ask people and we get what we need in a timely manner and stuff like that. It's not like we have to we, or anything like that.
Okay, good. Um, how do you feel the board is doing? Do you have any concerns or suggestions for us?
Nope. As long as you guys just stay, um, communicating with us or communicating and just, you know, keep us on the same page with you guys. Just don't, just don't let us get blindsided and, you know.
Right.
Pop, you know, kind of thing. Like, like if we had to do like, you know, for example, like a special election or, you know what I mean? Just as long as you keep us in the loop, you know what I mean?
Right.
I, I don't have a problem with that. Just as long as we're not blindsided by something, if it's going to impact us.
Exactly. We feel the same way.
Bob, do you have any questions or concerns for Julie or comments?
Um, I don't, I, I appreciated your answer, Julie. Uh, when the, when the question is about discrimination, it's, it actually goes beyond that. It's like any hostile work environment, whether it's discrimination or not, do you feel the environment is better? Um, and it, and it seems to a, to a person, it, it, it looks like it is, or it feels like it is. And, um, that's always great to hear. And I, I also want you to make sure that you're aware that, uh, not only can you reach out to the select board, uh, I'm, I'm going to speak for other people. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. You can reach out to any individual member on the select board as well, whenever. And that, that goes for everybody, even the ones I, yeah, you know, uh, for, for, for Darcy, for Tom, for anybody that, that I missed.
No, no, I, like I said, if I have to, whoever walks in, like if it's Mike or Angie or, you know, I have no problem. Like, hey, guess what? Or sometimes I do, like I said, I have to go out just to get, you know, to get a swat in because.
I don't think anybody here has swatted you.
No, I'd ask. Oh, no, I have to ask to be swatted because it, it will, now I'm not saying reach over and smack me upside my frickin' head or something like that, but just like, you know, like a lightly gentle lump pad to keep me.
Okay. Jamie, do you have anything?
Oh, I'm good.
Mike?
Julie, I'm going to ask the same thing I asked Ellen about the Nemrick. Um, do you feel that you can, if you're, um, struggling with any part of it, because I know it's new? And we've asked you to take on something and you, you took it on with open arms. Um, do you feel that you can ask us or, or, um, ask for more training or whatever if you need it?
Oh, my God, I go to Tim. I'm like.
No, I just, I, if we need to bring in.
I mean, like, today, somebody come in to do a marriage license and because I don't have the credit card machine anymore. And I think it, it's a missing day or something that we're supposed to do, we can do. And I'm like, can you hold on? I don't know how to do that. And then they ended up having cash. So I was like, oh, I'll write you a receipt. But I forgot that I could go into the system to write a receipt. So I'm like, oh, oh gee, gee, sorry. Let me, and I just hand rolled it because it, so I mean, once, I think, once I get a little bit, um, going on it and, you know, I'm in it more and I learn how to do it, that I think I'll be better at it. But no, if I have any question, I'm like, Tim, it's your favorite. But yeah, or Ellen.
You feel that if we need to have, you can ask us if we need to bring in Cynthia for more training or whatever? If, if we, you feel comfortable to ask us, correct?
Okay, Jesus, yeah.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. No, if I need help, I'll ask for the outsiders.
I figured that, but I just want you to know, same as with Ellen or any of them, any of you guys, that, you know, with the new system, if we need to bring in more training or whatever that we don't, that we haven't had. I, I, I don't want to speak to the whole entire board, but I probably am. Um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to get that for, for you guys, so to make it easier and, and more efficient. And I just want you to know that.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I mean, I called, well, the other day I called Ellen after. I'm like, Ellen, because I'm nervous about transferring money to the, the general. And I'm like, are you guys sure this is what I'm supposed to do? And I'm, they're, they're like, yes, it's okay. And I'm like, I don't know, I'm not quite comfortable yet doing that, but.
Well, yeah, I'm sure that.
It'll come in time.
That comfort level is going to grow for sure.
Absolutely.
Definitely. It's new, but I just wanted to make sure that you know that, you know, from the board's standpoint, we'll, we'll work with, and get you whatever training that we need to.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm not worried about that.
Okay. Good.
Good. Well, that was it for us, Julie. I just want to thank you very much for all your hard work that you've done this year. And I know that we've had some challenges. And you've come through like a champ as usual. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night, ma'am.
Bye, Julie.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the listeners, you can come up to the table. Hey, if I have to be on this big screen, so don't you.
You're beautiful.
I did my hair.
It's Tim, you can't see us.
I did my hair and nails, Jody, so.
Well, you're doing way better than me.
You might want to come down here.
I want to be on TV.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to say thank you for everything you've done this year. I know it's been a challenging year with COVID and everything. And we really appreciate everything that you did to keep the office running. And we met last year and we're doing the same thing again this year. We just want to ask you a couple of questions.
You can if you want to, Jules.
Julie isn't interested in what we have to say. Did she leave? All right. Do you enjoy your positions?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I don't enjoy the, you know, what nobody else enjoys in public office, but I like my job.
Good.
The public conflict?
Cool.
Within the job?
Good. Do you feel, um, connected to our team and the office and the board?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yeah.
Is there any equipment or resources that you need to help in your position, Jody?
Haven't.
Yeah.
Not even kidding.
That's good to know, Jim, you're in.
Home run, home run. Yeah, no, I mean, of course, we could always, you know what I mean, um.
Do you need some, like a fax machine or something? No? You're good?
Yeah, I'm hoping for the new office to have a map hanger.
Um, app hanger?
Yeah, that would be really great. So just like a carpet hanger, you just float through them instead of pulling them out of a drawer. And then they get ripped and stuff like that.
Had to definitely look into something.
So I think from my standpoint, I would definitely like to see that suggestion brought back to us.
Okay.
Okay, just so that.
So how would you want that? Would you want it in writing or would you want it?
Email. I think Rebecca was like looking at grants for one or so, or maybe it was in a thing. I think it might have been. It was just thrown up there, but yeah, definitely.
I would, I would just love to see that.
Okay.
You know, that's right. Just bringing it back to a board meeting when we get the town office open type thing. Just bring it back to us because it's not important because it really is. But it'll slip by.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so.
Because nobody touches them except.
But if it's going to make your job easier and more efficient, I think that's the question and that's what we're looking for. So I would love to see that back.
Okay.
In writing, probably in a P L two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then if we forget about it, don't be afraid to back to us.
Right, exactly.
And I've had.
I just want to do it.
More digital, digitized anyway, um, eventually. They still have to be stored somewhere.
They still have to be stored somewhere. That's right. No, that's right. And I think.
Julie did have to tape up some today. They were scanning and it was really quite shameful, but when they enrolled them, a lot of them. Were just singering, aren't they? Oh, that's horrible. Yeah.
So I would, I would love to see that. I, I think it's a great suggestion.
Okay.
Is what I'm saying.
Maybe start with.
Were they in part of the grant for the digitalization?
I, I don't know. Um, I've just been kind of like throwing it out there, um, a couple of times. And I think probably the same thing happened with, when I told Rebecca, she's like, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And it, I don't know whether it happened or, or it didn't. Otherwise I would have figured it showed up. So it's still just throwing it out there. I'll keep, keep throwing it.
Okay.
No, no, just, but I, I think it's an important thing because like I said, Wendy, if it's, if it's something you guys feel as the listeners is going to make your job easier and more efficient. Or when somebody comes in to look for something that's there, if it's going to make the public easier to, to find what they're looking for, then I think it's an important thing to have. And I, I don't want to see it. My standpoint, I don't want to see a good suggestion go by the wayside.
Right. And we certainly don't want the maps to disintegrate, not be able to see them and have them.
Yeah, I don't know how. Yeah, I don't know what they look like. And there's, there's such a varied size. Some of them can be this big and some of them are huge. So I don't know how they do that, but I do know they have them.
Okay.
So anyway.
Excellent. Um.
Did you have?
Did you have anything? No, you're good.
You're good on equipment, other than that?
I think when you're used to hamburger, we don't really know what. When you don't know any better, we're just fine.
We don't know. And I think you do. I just, I, you know, I think.
Haven't noticed anything.
I think it's a conversation we're having in here today a little bit with some of us about coming into maybe the 20th century, 18th or whatever, right? You know, I think it was just time to bring things up to speed.
Right. I'm so excited. So excited.
Good, good, good. Um, how do you feel the culture is in the office? Has it improved over last year?
Tremendously. Yeah, tremendously. Okay, yeah.
Wendy?
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Obusive.
Very good. How do you feel about the communication in the office? Has that improved? Because that was like a little bit last year, came up a lot with communication.
Yeah, for sure. Everything is much improved. And, and, and if something comes up that, you know, that we didn't discuss, we know now that we should discuss. Do you know what I mean? So it's, yeah.
And do you feel the board has a good communication with you as well?
For sure.
Go ahead.
Well, Wendy, she was done?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, um, the, the baseline for the communication improvement is, um, that we're beginning to trust again. I think trust has been brought back into here that we trust that something that's said to Tim isn't going to be used, um, in some sort of.
Negative way.
Um, or that it stops right there and is turned around, you know, just, there's just no mo, there's just. Yeah, there's no underlying motive. There's no underlying agenda that, um, can't. Um, so trust has really, um, uh, been a great foundation to the communication that's improved. So.
Excellent. Great to hear. And I'm sorry that you're so emotional.
I had.
It's okay.
That was there.
That's okay.
I think, I think, I, I think that's been a big problem for a while.
Yeah.
I just think it's been out there for a long time, for whatever reason. And I think you're absolutely right. I see that. Because I, like I told, like you said before, with Ellen or Darcy or whatever, I think it was Ellen, I'm in here quite often during the week, in and out. And, and, um, I see that. I, I see the trust. I see a riff every once in a while, a little bit here and there, but that's it.
And I don't know if so it's a riff. I think it's just a, it's like, we don't.
Well, yeah, but I, 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 I mean, you're right. You're right, Jody. It's, I see a difference of opinion.
Right, right.
Okay.
Because listen, I really, there has not.
No, because riff is not the correct word. But I see a difference of opinion. But I also, but I also see the difference of opinion is handled right then.
Yeah.
And it doesn't go anywhere else.
And it's not hurtful.
No, no.
Toxic.
No, it's not.
What is being said and.
People listen, listen to each other
Yeah.
on the difference of opinion. And that's what should happen because, because not every, you know, I mean, let's face it, I'm, I'm wrong once in a while. No. Now, you know, it's, it's, that's what makes, that's what makes things really work. And I think that's what increases that trust level. Because you can trust that you can differ with something that Tim is saying or, or Jody or whoever. Just because they're sitting here, I'm just using them as examples. You, you can, you can trust that you can have that different opinion. And you get to work through it. And then when you're done, you're going to just move on to the next thing.
It just moves on. There's nothing that comes up, rears its head back here.
Right. And I, I think that's huge. I, and I see that, you know, I see that.
And I've heard it from the public. You can, as soon as you walk through the door, you can feel
A calm.
A calm. Or sometimes before you would walk through the door and you could feel the tension.
Yeah.
And the public could as well. And I've heard nothing but great comments from the public about everybody lately in the office. So kudos to all of you. Um, are you satisfied with the level of comfort in your work area? Yeah, both of you? Yeah. I mean, hopefully with the new town office, you'll have your own space.
Listen, yeah, listen. We don't need much.
We really never needed much.
A heating pad and a floor heater.
Yes. New office, you won't need a floor heater. You'll have heat. A snowsuit.
So while he makes a whole battery out of it.
Listen, my son just bought me a. Just bought me a beautiful one for Christmas. Not Milwaukee, but it's a motorcycle brand anyways. It's got a little tires. Love it. But yeah, the battery doesn't last long.
We need the kind that you can sit there and plug in. You don't need a battery. Do you feel that the town protects the employees from discrimination?
I really don't know of any.
And that can be a whole.
Yeah, well, listen, yeah, I mean, I don't really.
You feel like there's any issue where you haven't, that you've had or? Wendy?
Do I feel that you were protecting, is that, that's a yes. I feel protected from
Discrimination.
Yeah, I don't want to say the wrong.
Do you feel like the town is from any kind of discrimination?
General population that we're talking about us, right? Yes, I do feel.
Okay, great. Um, do you think that there's any practices or policies in the office that need to be changed? Well, she's got a smile on her face. This one's thinking.
I'm new speaker. I, listen, I, I'm only.
You're not going to hurt her feelings.
In my opinion, Wendy, the only way to make this, the only way to make something like this successful is if it all comes out on the table. And, and if something's held back in, if, if somebody has something to say and if it's held in, we're never going to be successful at fixing it.
Right, that's learning curve, whatever it may be.
So my proposal is to somehow, now that we have a dynamic and there's I think the Lister's office has three spots and there's a one year, a two year and a three year and they're kind of, you know, just juggled up, but first of all, my proposal is on wages. When you have three equal, when you have three equal working parts, then that's one thing. But when you have somebody that comes in on a one year that's learning and then somebody that's been, you know, here for a while, that's a clerk to the person that knows the most and is doing the heavy lifting and things like that. I think there is a definite.
You think there should be a different, a different wage?
Yeah, I do. I think, I do. And whether it be a bonus for, that we vote on to see who gets it. Because you can't, the problem is with the way, with the voting thing. If someone were coming, I don't, I don't know how that would work. I, I think there, if you had a thousand dollar bonus that we're going to vote on, on how it gets divvied up or whatever happens at the end of the year, once the grand list is lodged, that we do something. Then it's contingent on how we vote instead of, or maybe a wage thing would work, but if, if someone were to leave, you can't really stick it in the two year, three year, one year thing because that person that like steps into a three year doesn't necessarily. Yeah, it, it's, it's a very complicated and I've really been thinking about it, like how would that work? And Alonso and I were like, no, that wouldn't work. That couldn't work. So I'm throwing it in your court to try to figure out how that would work, but a, a bonus or stipend of some sort for, and, and we could be in agreement, Dave and I could say, okay, we, I vote this way or I'm giving it to this person because they did, you know, exponentially more work than. And, and that's not to say anybody's worth anything more because I can back up a trailer way better than you. But I can do the Lister's job as good as you. So I'm willing to take 20 bucks for backing up a horse trailer and you can take the 20 bucks for doing a good job here.
I appreciate, I do this sentiment so, so much, but I just think it would muddy the wa, and I just don't know how it could be worked out. I mean, listen, I don't, that's my job. I don't, and I don't mind it. And listen, you, you you're way down playing. Well, Dave is new, so, so not so much his, but, but yeah, so I don't know as though that.
So this is something that we need to look into. So does V L C T have any kind of?
And I also would like to see, I would also like to see the three years coming back up, okay? The three year thing in March. And I'm wondering, can, one of my questions is, is can she run for that? Because she's already in a two year. Hers isn't coming up, but.
Listen, I'm going with you.
So that's something else.
I know what you're saying, Jody.
And get into the three year and so, and then I'll, I can run for the one year because Dave's out too. Me and, or me and Dave are out. That's one of three.
See, Jody, they just don't want you to go anywhere, honey.
Listen, and I won't, and I, I do, I.
They're trying to put you on a three year, so you're stuck for another three.
And, and that way, if you could, if you could stipulate that the, for that term, for that person in that term, these are I, I don't know how, how you're going to. This guy's smart enough to work it out. He's got math going on, but I don't know. That's my proposal. I would like to change the pay structure in the Lister's office. That, wow, that was easy. I could have just.
I guess my first question would be, have you talked to any other Lister's or other towns to see if they do something like that?
I don't, I mean. It doesn't, I, it, no, I wouldn't. I wouldn't because I don't care what other listeners are doing.
Well, I understand. I didn't know if you guys ever meet.
At our educational conferences.
Do you not have that anymore? Can't do it online?
Usually you get that one on one, hey, what are you doing? But I, we could, I guess.
Well, just curious.
Yeah, no, I haven't, I haven't reached out for anybody and I don't know any better.
Okay, we can. Go ahead.
I gotta apologize for my ignorance here, but I know, I like with the town clerk, there's the, the president of the Association of Town Clerks in Vermont. I don't know the name of the organization, but it used to be the one endorse it. I don't think it is now. But I, I was wondering if there is something similar for Lister's. And if there is, that would be somebody great to reach out to and talk about pay structure.
Because I know, one of the reasons Barb left was because she had asked for an increase and she, you have to weigh out, you know, a, a Lister versus an assessor, no matter what, you're still going to be coming out ahead of the game. So I, I, and I would even, yeah.
I, I think it's, I think it's a tremendously valid point. Because, because I think, and I've heard this from, since I've been in, on the select board and even the zoning administrator before that, before I got on the board, I heard the same thing. I've heard it now for whatever, two, three years. Where the knowledge, the, the time that it takes you as Lister's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the time that it takes you as Lister's to learn the position and become more efficient, the, the more you're there, the more efficient you come, which is kind of natural anyways. But when you step in as a Lister, year one, it's a, it's your, you're, you're in your blind. Right?
Yeah, overwhelmed.
And, and I, I think it's a, I think it's a valid point, Wendy. And I think it's probably our job to try to figure out how to substantiate that point.
Because I, I just feel that if if you can do what's needed and come away with it and go I'm, you know, appreciated because I'm being, I'm worth.
And I, and I know, and I know where Jody's coming from. I, I, and I don't want to speak for you, Jody, but.
It's not a reflection of our personal human worth. It's a reflection of workload.
The way I look at things, the way I look at things in anything I've ever done, when I have people who are working with me or under me, is that we're all a team. Okay, we're, we're all a team. And in my everyday job, and, and, you know, I think Ganji will tell you the same exact thing that I'm going to say. And I think Bob probably would as well. When you have employees who work under you, when you're the boss. Okay, you're only as good as your worst employee. No matter what. So, but it doesn't mean that the person who, and I don't look at it this way. Doesn't mean that the person who is being compensated more financially is more valuable.
Right. And I think if it were coming from her and saying, I do this, it, it would be completely different atmosphere. It's coming from me. And I want this to happen.
I've heard that from.
My, and I feel compensated for what I do.
So I think, I think we touched on that at, at one point, you know, in, in a conversation with Tim. So I think that's something that we as a board should pursue and, and see if we can come up with, with viables.
Yeah, I don't know how.
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm sitting here, I got, I got ideas spinning in my head, but I can, I can shoot everyone down that I've come up with so far. But it's, it's because, because there's differences. I, I just, I, there's, there's a viable solution in this, in my opinion.
And the thing, and it's unless, unless an assessor, a retired assessor steps up and says, hey, I'd love to step in. You cannot afford to lose somebody that knows what they're doing.
No, I, I don't disagree with that at all.
If we start from scratch, you know, there's a problem. And I mean, you can, you can pull somebody out, but it's so valuable to have somebody that knows people in this town, knows properties in this town, knows who's hanging out with who, knows who's building things where I don't know, right, go anywhere, do anything. She's smart in that way.
I, I just, I think, I think it's, I think it's a valid point and I think there's something to be said for that experience. And I, and I know where you're coming from. I, I totally know you enough to know where you're coming from.
And I get it. I love her for it. But if you get somebody from, you know, Albany that decides to drive in and do this, they're, that, that finesse of, that you have to know. He's just going to look at properties and numbers and not know anything and that, and it's a very hard shoes to fill. So anyway, I would. That's, that's the policy.
I know.
We will work on it.
I, even though I took this job thinking I was filing and answering phones.
How many answered phones do you receive? None, probably.
Oh, it's just answering phones. You can do it.
Start to get comfortable with, you know, what we're, there's just so much to learn.
I think we have to, I think it's our responsibility as a board. We asked the question. We got an answer. And I think it's our responsibility as a board to pursue an answer for it. And, and maybe we, maybe we never come up with one. Maybe we don't. But I think it's our responsibility to try to figure that out because, let's face it. You're not always going to be the one, but you're not always going to be the one that's sitting in that position. We may have somebody different. Three, four or five years now, maybe Wendy's sitting in the same position as, as what you are experienced by.
Yeah, 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 that would be great.
It's just.
Your medical breakthroughs. Okay, I'm with you.
I'm just, I'm just looking for the future too, Jody. And, and you know, it's not all about you, girl. But I'm glad, I'm honestly, I'm really glad that we can sit here and we can hand down discussion and we can be honest with each and every one of us can come out and say that.
I need, I really want to get her in the three year slot so that it's, it's not.
I, I really, I really feel, I really feel we've come a long ways in a year that we can sit here and we can come out with that and we can say things and we can laugh about it.
Right, absolutely.
But we know what to say.
You're not crying. Exactly. Okay, last question. How do you feel the board is doing and do you have any concerns or suggestions for us?
I think you're rocking it.
Yeah, I think you guys, as far as involved now with like. Yeah, I think from what I see.
Alright, thank you very much.
Well, I think you guys, from what I've seen in, in the Lister's office, your grand list, everything that you guys are doing.
Still have a budget? She's still working magic.
I think the thing is, and I'm probably involved, like I said, a little more with some of your grievances and different things because you've asked me some questions. I think that's, I think that's, I think being able to do that is tremendously important because you, you guys can go into your grievances or whatever you're going into with more opinions and more facts that can back up whatever you're doing.
It's a very spider webby thing.
And I see it. I, you know, I, I see it. So, um, I'm, I'm extremely happy with that part of it because you guys do reach out and ask questions. You don't feel like you can't.
Listen, because I really have had such a hard, it's a lot just to learn my job. So to try to learn. And I feel really horrible. I say to Tim, I say to John all the time, I found a perfect world. I'd like to take a course on Excel. I'd like to take a course. I'd like to know all the, you know, zoning and all this. But Judith, as priest, I, you know what I mean? It's been such a tremendous load. I've you know, just to concentrate on my.
And, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that either, Jody, because, because you're, I guess what I'm saying is you're not afraid to reach out to me as a zoning administrator. And, and ask me, you know, what about a grievance or about a piece of property or whatever. And I, I think that's, I think it makes you more efficient at your own job, to tell you the truth. It's, it's my.
Listen, none of us want to look ridiculous. And I think, you know, I'm tired of that. Work as a team in this office.
I think we've come a long way.
Grade school stuff is in the past.
Well, I think our, I think all of our town, I think all of our town elected officials and our town employees, since I've been sitting on the board with, with my fellow board members for going into a second year. I feel the connection between us all. And I think that everybody does feel that they're a member of a team because we are. Because there's not one of us that makes that wheel go around any better than the other one. It's, we all have to work together as a team. And when we miss that spoke out of a wheel, then we're all in trouble. And I think that culture's changed.
Any of us here anything we take and share with the other board members so we can take and try to nip it in the box?
Less like an episode of Survivor.
Yeah. Bob, do you have anything to add or ask?
No, I just have a full appreciation for how difficult the job is. I mean, it, that really is, you know, and, and from what I can see in my involvement in the B C A hearings and, and, and those sorts of things, the only time I've seen where we've had to change or alter anything that the Lister's have done is when new information came to light that, that wasn't available when when it first happened. I have not seen any glaring errors or anything like that that, that occurred. Just, and the willingness to be able to reassess based on new information is always important. So, and of course, just like everybody else, I can see all kinds of reasons to do the, the wage thing that we were talking about, but I can also see all kinds of complications.
And that's not what I want. You know what I mean? I just.
We can still look into it.
You know what I mean? Okay, but, okay.
Obviously, we know where you're coming from because you've been pretty adamant about it.
You know what? Then I don't want anybody to think that, oh, she's, you know, I just, we are all equals in the Lister's office. And I think we are a great team and I think we have a great dynamic. And I think I just, listen, I mean, it's hard to be in a team, right?
I, I think, I think it merits looking into, and I think we will. And, and we, like I said, we, we may never come up with a suggestion because Bob's right. The more you think about it, you know, you can, yeah, I can come up with a reason to, and then I come up with a reason not to. Then I come up with two reasons to do it. And then three not to, back and forth, you know, and I'm sure that's going through Bob's head.
And, and it's going to be hard because it switches with years and things like that. But because like Dave probably won't run on his next one year. And there will be that open spot. So of course, there has to be some sort of a, almost like year by year. Right. I, I don't even know and or.
There's probably a step system. There's probably a step system that spins into my head right off the bat, um, almost like the education system uses for, for their teachers, you know.
Gotta be.
But that's, that's for another day. We know where you're coming from and I appreciate it.
No problem.
We can have Tim do it.
We need two Tims, I guess.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Well, just lastly, uh, what I was gonna add at the end there was just lastly, just like I said to others. I hope you all know that not only can you approach us as a board with any, any questions, comments, concerns or ideas or anything. Uh, you can also approach any one of us individually. Just whatever is comfortable. Yes, please always feel free to reach out.
No, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Well, thanks for having us.
Thanks for being open and honest.
Absolutely.
That's just. We can't fix it if we don't know about it.
Exactly.
Well, thank.
Thank you so much.
Have a nice evening.
You too. So that opens up to public comment. Megan, is there anybody on public comment? Please raise your hands.
Yeah, there's nobody, nobody on. It's just Megan, me and you.
We don't need an executive session.
We don't need an executive session because nobody needed one. So can I annotation, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Angie, I. Don't forget tomorrow night, everybody, seven o'clock.